They can have their submissions done electronically, or they can also drop the submissions here at, here off at the district office. We are going to try to think of another alternative location because I do not want to bog the district office down and put that tedious job on Nancy because I love Nancy and I don't want her to get that.
Well, we're closed for winter break also.
I know, so I'm just saying, when you get them on January 8th, I don't want you to be bogged down with a bunch of stuff, you'll be like, "What?" But we will be featuring all of our BSU's, which is the Black Student Union, Antioch Black Powered and Educated, Divine Voices, Antioch Music Masters. We have Young Gifted and Black from Oakland, along with all of some several events, some churches that will also be participating in this event. All 15th, East County NAACP will be hosting its annual prayer breakfast that morning. And that will be held at the only school in the community named after Dr. King, which is at, in Pittsburgh, Martin Luther King Junior, Junior High School. And that will be promptly at 8:00 a.m. Last but not least, we will be celebrating our African-American Heritage Night, Antioch Family Night, that will be on February 8th. Golden State Warriors against the Dallas Mavericks. I do have tickets still available, so please come out and support. This goes towards our scholarship fund. I know the time expired, but yeah, it's all right. I'm the only one, so y'all can operate. But no, I really want to appreciate everybody and I really want to say happy holidays to everyone. And remember, this is the season to be jolly.
All the years that I worked on the Martin Luther King, I'm not doing it any longer, but we had a drop-off with the city. At one time, it was the city manager's office. I'm just saying, they're open.
Just discovered two cards as I turn the page, so we do have more speakers. Nina, Selena?
So I get my extra minute, right?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Nina Yellama. My daughter attends John Muir Elementary. She had an IEP with Antioch Unified School District since she was three years old, almost three years ago. I wanted to take time to shed light on the lack of communication concerning information regarding my daughter's placement. My daughter was placed in a special ed class when she was three years old and I voiced to her teacher I wanted inclusion. I would like a one-to-one aide for her kindergarten placement. I was told I couldn't have that. I signed her IEP that I would be, that she would be placed in a special ed kindergarten class, but I didn't know my rights. And since her teacher advised, she couldn't have inclusion and she claims to have had the best interest for my daughter, I didn't feel I had any other options. After the IEP, I started to research and reach out to other parents and advocates, and my eyes began to open. I learned that my daughter has every right to be educated alongside her typically developing peers with the proper services and supports. I later sent an email to special ed that I wanted to hold another IEP to discuss inclusion. We met and I was told in so many ways that inclusion wouldn't work for my daughter. I was told she would feel overwhelmed and withdraw. I waited a couple of weeks for a letter that denied full general ed placement. Mind you, school already started a few weeks ago. My daughter was not in school. I was forced to get an attorney and keep my daughter out of school for over two months while we fought for her placement. I was so looking forward to taking her to her first day of school in 2017. I was deprived of that right for my daughter, and my daughter was deprived of two months of her education. Fast forward, my daughter is now in general ed placement with a one-to-one aide and is continuing other services such as OT speech and adaptive PE. She is contributing to her classroom in so many ways. Academically, she is doing great and surprises us every day with how quickly she's excelling. Her aide lets us, her aide lets her do her work by herself or with her peers and steps in only when needed. You see, my kiddo learns from other kiddos. She models what they're doing, and she's a visual learner. Since being in gen ed, she's learned over 17 letters and sounds, is forming full sentence structures. She's doing her work. And so, and she has so many friends, they actually argue who's going to play with her at recess. Excuse me. Inclusion is so beneficial to my daughter, as well as the other students, as it teaches them how to be accepting of other people that may look different or be a little different. Shouldn't we be teaching our children about acceptance? It was a long road to get here and it really shouldn't have been. I'm disappointed that I've had to spend so much time fighting for my daughter's basic rights. I would ask that you would not make it so difficult for the next parent who is wanting inclusion for their child. Please look at the benefits and the positives of inclusion. Don't look at the negatives. My daughter is a poster child for inclusion and she's thriving. She's doing amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Laura, Lori Hawley.
Hello, my name is Lori Hawley and my son is a student at Antioch Charter Academy, too. He has an IEP with Antioch School District and has, since he entered the district when he turned three, almost nine years ago. I am here to express my concern about the lack of communication and concealing of information by the special ed department, as well as consistent understaffing of occupational therapists. My son's IEP stipulates 30 minutes of occupational therapy once per week. I was concerned when I did not receive a proxy report on his OT goals at the end of November when report cards came home. When I emailed his OT, Beth Jackson, I learned that Liam had only received four of his OT sessions this year, three in September and one in October. I was told that the other itinerant OT resigned in October and Beth, who only works four days per week, was reassigned to work with other students. I was appalled to learn that my son had not had OT in over a month and that the district had not notified me that there was no longer an OT assigned to provide his services. They had not notified his teacher or case manager of this either. Furthermore, why were other students prioritized above my son and he removed from Beth's caseload? You can imagine my further shock when I learned that a friend of mine who has a daughter at another AUSD school just had OT services added to her IEP the last week of November and the district contracted with Foundations Therapy to provide her daughter with OT services immediately beginning last week. Why didn't the district contract with Foundations to provide my son with services when he was removed from Beth's caseload in October? Why was I told there's only one OT for the district right now when clearly they're contracting with at least one other? Once I emailed district special ed administrators about this last week and requested they contract with Foundations to provide services to my son, I was told they are at capacity. That wouldn't be the situation if they had done so back in October when he first lost his OT. None of this would have occurred if the district had hired a sufficient number of OTs over the summer instead of relying on itinerant contract OTs. There's an ongoing issue of the district chronically hiring fewer OTs than required to service a district of more than 17,000 students. For the past nine years, I believe the most OTs that AUSD has employed at one time is 2.4 FTE, whereas neighboring Brentwood School District currently has 4.9 FTE for a district with half as many students. At the end of last school year, both districts employed full-time OTs left AUSD while the third, part-time one, left mid-last school year. That should be telling. AUSD has been asking their OTs to do the impossible, to service a district of this size with less than half of the necessary number of OTs. I strongly encourage the district to hire an adequate number of in-house OTs and to promptly communicate to all parents when they discontinue providing services stipulated in a child's IEP and be honest with the options available to the district to rectify those situations. Thank you.
Excuse me, could you leave your information? The two of you?
Yep.
The district staff, correct? Oh, their names and the school, I would like to know the schools, thank you.
Any of the students' names?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, I mean, school's name, yeah, right. This shouldn't be happening.
That brings us to individuals to address the board regarding items that are on the agenda from district employees. We don't seem to have any cards on that, so that moves us to number eight, district reports. We have none. Hearings, public hearings, we have none, number nine. Public presentations, number 10, none. Consent items, number 11.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to say there's a revised purchase order report on your desk.
What's revised?
11B.
11B?
Yes.
There is also revision to the human resource reports, and I believe it's item 11O.
11O?
There's two.
There's two. Two.
N. N.
N and O.
I'd like to pull P as Paul for a separate vote.
I'd like to pull J for a question.
I'd like to pull Q.
Q.
Then I do have a question on the purchase order report, but I am looking for...
For letter B?
Yes, B.
Oh, okay. I have a question as well.
Anything else?
And I had a question on the accounts payable, so D. I think that's it. I think D, D.
Okay, if anybody else has anything further, please bring that up. But for now, maybe we can start with D.
D, so on the purchase order report, there was an amount on there for 6,500 for Leadership and Associates. I'm just curious about what services that was for. I did have it, it would be item...
Oh, I can answer that. There are five superintendents in Contra Costa County who were invited by Leadership and Associates, myself, Nellie Meyer from Mount Dalby School District, San Ramo, Walnut Creek School District, Pittsburgh, and myself, and we were invited to participate in the leadership network. That is, that.
It cost us 6,500?
It's per my contract.
So is it included? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand. So you're saying that this is, is it a membership?
Yes.
So it's a membership for 6,000?
Professional Development.
Okay, just want to understand, okay.
I'm sorry, what's, what's wrong with that?
That is...
That's, page two?
I actually have this typed up on a piece of paper, but I can't find the paper, so my apologies.
You mean on the revised, Jessica?
No, you're always welcome to send in your questions in advance so we can give you more definitive answers.
Well, I see it, I found it.
As well.
I agree, I think that's ideal, but I just, I just had my email put on a brand-new device, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping my email will work so I could actually do send the questions ahead of time, but...
That would be great.
Unfortunately, that's not an option to me. Okay, so that's one of your professional development memberships?
Yes.
Okay, and let's see. I think that was the only question that I had for that.
Okay, and I had a question. I don't see, in regards to deferred maintenance, that we remove the exterior, exterior painting, which was on the first line, commercial residential? Is it on the revised copy? I don't see it on the, was that moved? That was my question, but 31,770 dollars?
Yeah, that one was discussed last time. It's for the whole, the building and all the portables.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
It was approved last.
Okay, so it's not again, we're not charging?
No.
Okay.
What number is that?
No, so on the first copy, present.
Okay.
Yeah, 31,000. I thought he had another charge for 31,000.
Good catch, that was probably the reason for the revision. You found it.
Have we done D yet? I don't think we've...
That's what you're on about.
Someone have a question on D?
Just a second, yeah. I think on D, on the accounts payable report, I was looking at the Verizon Wireless expenses. I just wanted a verification of what that was, what Verizon Wireless is for. I think I saw it several...
Those are, and Ms. Sanford, please feel free to expand. Those are for our maintenance workers who are out in the field, who we need to get ahold of. They're fixing sprinklers, we have a water main go out, and so it could be also our dispatchers.
Yes.
It's, it's usually general maintenance.
So it's like a paging system that we pay for them to be accessible?
Yes, to report to sites, should there be an emergency to...
Yeah, to get hold of one another.
Because a lot of them are itinerant and they're not stuck at a desk.
It is cellphone service, right?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification, so we are paying for their cellphones, not a pager, not a walkie-talkie with a mile radius, it is actual cellphone. Okay. Yes?
Yes.
I had a question on J. I guess that's us asking a rhetorical question here, I guess that's just one of those things. It seems that this, this one, I think we were told that we normally, is it 10%, we normally allot for change orders? And this is, I guess, up to about 18% now, it seems. It went up to 531,000 in the past and now another 46,000, so...
Yeah. Good evening, trustee. So when I explained it, I clearly said that there are, there's 10% for construction contingency and there is 10% for design contingency. So on building 1100, there were several items because of the way that building was, we had to leave it for it to be discovered during construction and then designed and, you know, add and on. So that was a, you know, a unique situation because that building had a lot of unforeseen items, so it had to be, the gypsum board and all the tack boards and all that had to be removed and had to be uncovered for them to design that and incorporate it into the construction. So that's why that building actually just went slightly above. And, and there were a lot of old pipes and all that stuff which we had to remove, and then we actually did well on that building, you know, compared, comparing the estimate because the bid came almost 1.5 million dollar under because we combined the cafe and the 1100 together. So comparing that, we are, you know, the, the final cost, we are still below the estimate of the initial estimate when we went out, so... We had, you know, we had taken that approach, like we will not put that upfront and we'll, contractor come onboard, they uncover it, and then we add it as a change order. So that's how we dealt with it.
And for clarification?
Yeah.
The 10% is, is on the entire project, so you may actually save in other areas, but the bottom line, you're, you're going for 10% on the 50-some odd million?
56.5 million, yeah. 11, on, on building 1100, there were a lot of costs, we tried to cut it out because we just wanted to make sure we get a good bid. So when the project went out to bid, there were a lot of scope, we actually took it out, you know, because we don't want to get a, like I said, we want to get like a low-tit bid, like a big amount, because we will not get a dollar to dollar back from the contractor, we'll only get 25 cents to a dollar. Once they bid it, they will not give the whole thing back. So this is a better approach, you know, trying to go back as a change order because we will get more value for the money spent.
So let me see if I fully understand.
Yes.
Is it 10% or 20%? Is it 10% design and 10% construction?
It is, it is, yeah. On a new building, you could almost say that you could contain within, on 10% with construction contingency. On an existing building modernization, it always, you have to think about 20%. 10% for construction contingency and 10% for the design contingency.
So, and my, my concern is the same as it always is on change orders, is that I know initially, prior to you coming, we had some expenditures that were not approved, we had things done that were not a part of the original agreement.
Okay.
And so I'm just concerned that we'll have enough money.
Yes, we are, we are now working on the last project or the last modernization of the classroom as we are speaking right now. So we are making sure that all the projects are getting done and the school is getting the best, you know, what they are, what they want to achieve for the measure B. We are not leaving anything behind.
So we're looking at the cafeteria, right? The cafeteria?
The cafe is getting built and getting constructed, opening in March, or rather, you know, planned to open sometime in, production in March and opening in April. The pool is, you know, scheduled to complete in April and, and also planned to open in April. So the last being three, four, five modernization is actually going on right now with the design or the pre-construction services for that.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe we still have Q to discuss.
Q and P is pulled for a separate vote.
Q and P, yes.
So I just had, I had a general question about Q and I'm wondering if this contract, what we do with mathematics is something that is going to be replicated with all of our schools or is this just the isolated site? Because we, we did score very low in math and rather than, you know, across all schools, all levels, we scored, you know, we had negative marks in math. So I'm just wondering if there's going to be a larger plan or if we're going to continue to choose, have each school choose what's going to work for them, if we're going to do something more collaborative and global in terms of math and contracts? I know this is staff development, but I'm wondering how we're going to include all of our teachers for math development and to make it equitable across.
I'll let Ms. Abara speak to this, but I'll say, you probably recognize that the board has approved probably six other contracts with the UC Davis math, and, and those were for full staff development days?
Right.
Just like what you're saying, so it's not isolated. These are follow-up days for that, and we, we need to do a lot more in this area and it's a huge area of focus. I know Ms. Abara and I have already spent considerable amount of time talking about what is really happening across the state, which is this flat and, and low achievement in mathematics, so if you want to speak further to that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just coming onboard, but it is, it's, we're seeing it everywhere and it's definitely going to be an area of focus for us. This, as Ms. Anello alluded to, that it's an ongoing piece for this school in addition to their WASC. It was brought up for them specifically, but across the board, we will be looking at math. We're still kind of, I'm looking at the data and we're, we'll bring teams together to have a more consistent approach.
Okay, so I think that's what's going to be needed and I understand, I've, I've looked at all the numbers and I've done the comparison, et cetera, et cetera, but just going to go on record, say I'm only worried about Antioch. I mean, I know what the other districts look like, but I'm only concerned about this one. So I just want to make sure we're making the right decisions. So we're the example, not a part of this global process of where everybody's failing. I think that's inexcusable, so anyway, thank you.
If I can add to that, since you're new onboard, we still have not received the data in regards to these particular University of California Davis Math Program, and I would like to see the data. And the emphasis is on elementary, not at the high school level. If we could still focus on that, it seems like we're getting Sylvan Learning Center after-school program. I, I didn't receive adequate data in regards to that. And then, again, we're another LCAP funding issue, and I don't see the data and results to, if we can receive that, that would be great. So the successful outcomes of that.
I'd be happy to send you the link. We have a dashboard on every one of these contracts that are on our website, and I'm happy to send that to you, specifically as it relates to Sylvan and this also. They're, they're constantly updating, and so maybe since we last met, you, it hasn't, you haven't seen that data, I'm happy to do that.
And this is, I'm referring to elementary level in regards to the scores or...
It depends on where the contract or the services. So if you have an elementary school, each elementary school also has their own dashboard that you can now get and kind of see, okay, where's their funding going and what's, what's that generating, how many students are being served, and that sort of thing. And Mr. Murphy and I are always happy to sit down as well and, and meet with you on any particular vendor.
Okay, because the last report didn't specify, you know, like for instance, if a third grade, if a third grader's at second grade level, I'm, I'm not seeing, they've improved to fourth grade level or they're below reading level. So, yeah, that's my concern, since my son is in the district and he's a fifth grader, I'm seeing a lot of scores that are below reading level, two, two, three grades below. So that's my concern.
And then I'm just going to make one more comment regarding Antioch High School, is that Antioch High School has been in program improvement for years. And, you know, this last issue with them not really passing their WASC accreditation and being on probation, I'd like to really hone in and try to help, you know, try to make sure that we're getting our, paying for our money and making sure that the teachers can really use this information and that it's not just a training just for training. I mean, I know it's UC Davis, but I, I think that because there hasn't been improvements and is this our first time using UC Davis? So we've used them in the past. Yeah, and it's just something to think about in terms of how we're spending our supplemental and concentration funds, is that if this really isn't benefiting our teachers and they're not able to take this information they receive and implement, then we have to find out what's really going to work for the teachers. I think it's good, I think it's a good start, but I think going forward, we really have to give it some serious consideration. So thank you.
This isn't the time of a full-blown discussion on the subject?
No.
Of course, but I was speaking to trustee in Pittsburgh and he mentioned, I think it's called I-ready?
We have that.
We, we have that now?
Yes.
Okay, learn more about it, good.
So thank you. And everybody's copying.
I think that covers our, our questions except for P, if I'm not mistaken.
You want, you pulled P. Diane, did you pull something?
I just want to vote on it.
No, I didn't know. It's okay. So do we want to vote on P separately now?
Yes.
Do you have any questions on P or...
We have some questions, I'm sorry.
Okay. We've, we've pulled P for a separate vote? So we assume that Jessica, the N and O, it's just revisions, the typical stuff.
And this is the master contract for... P?
Which one is this?
The Treatment Center.
P.
Oh, P's and Paul? Okay.
Do I hear a motion on P?
Wait.
We haven't done. We haven't done, okay. Who's going to, who's going to speak on P?
No.
We're going to vote on everything and then talk P after that.
You don't even have to talk about it. I just want a separate vote.
She just wants a separate vote. Okay. Okay, we'll, okay, we'll vote on everything else and then we'll vote on P. Do I hear a motion to approve the calendar with the revisions? I still move in the consent items, minus P.
Minus P, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hack, second by trustee Vinson. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0 for the consent calendar, minus P, which we'll vote on separately. P?
So...
If there's no need for discussion, does anyone have any questions?
Well, actually, I have just a question, is this is a special ed contract?
Yes, this is a student that moved into our district with an IEP that had already specified this particular placement, and by law, we are required to honor that IEP.
Just want to just put that out there, that is a special ed. Just one student, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
If no further discussion, do I hear a motion on that? Some of you. Move by trustee Hack.
Second.
Second is by trustee Vinson. If no discussion approval, do I hear whose eye? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
One opposition? Any abstentions? We have a vote, four ayes and one nay, trustee Gibson Gray. Motion carries. That brings us to 13. Item 12, first interim report.
So, good evening. We have a short presentation on the first interim report, basically the general fund operations. So, Joe? So the governing board of Antioch Unified School District adopted the 2017-18... So the governing board of Antioch Unified School District adopted the 2017-18 budget last June 28, 2017. The superintendent is required to submit two reports after that, the first interim and the second interim. The first interim report is due December 15 and the actual expenditures go as far as October 31, while the second interim report is due March 15 and the actual expenditures are through January 31st. So interim reports basically came up through the AB 1200 requirements, the state, which means that school districts are required to certify that the financial obligations of the districts are well-met by the financial situation as shown in the financial report for the first, for the current year and the subsequent two years. So the purpose of the interim report is to detail the changes from the 1718-adapted budget in accordance with the state-adapted criteria and standards and also to communicate the overall financial condition of the district to the governing board. So on page four, we're showing the revenues, total revenues, expenditures, transfers in and out, and the fund balance for the district for the fiscal year 1718. The third column shows the adapted budget numbers as of June 28, 2017, for July 1 to June 30, 2018. The second, the next column is the revised budget that we had, that the board approved last October 31st. And then the second one, I mean, the second, the next column is the first interim budget numbers. So for total revenues, there's only a difference of about $3,000 from the revised budget of 190,325,978 to the first interim budget of 190,329,045. For the expenditures, we have a difference of 2.7, which is a positive change, and we are going to explain on the next page what those differences in the expenditures are. We are reducing expenditures from the original budget. And this will give us an increase in fund balance of 2.7 million dollars. So on page five, these are the detailed information for the changes. Revenues, there's only 3,000 changes, which actually came up from the various minor adjustments in the other local revenue portions. For the expenditures, we are reducing the certificated salaries, classified salaries and employee benefits mainly because of the vacant position reductions, meaning we budgeted a full-blown budget and then as we review during the course of the year, HR identified that some positions will not be filled and this will come up to about $2 million. The books and supplies have minor revisions of 69,000 and the services and other operating expenses, $71,000. The other outgo has an increase of 90,000 for the state's special schools expense. So this comes up to a positive change of 2.7 million dollars. I'm not going to go through pages six and seven because they are just details for the unrestricted and restricted portions, but so I'm going to jump to page eight. Page eight is the components of ending fund balance. So out of the 16.5 million, we are setting aside some of these items, for example, for revolving cash of 20,000. There are legally restricted categorical program fund balances that need to be set aside. One of them is the routine repair maintenance and the other local donations. The 3% state mandated economic or designated for economic uncertainties is about 5.9 million dollars. The reserve for economic uncertainties as additional board reserve, which was approved in 2016, is 3.9 million dollars. We are also setting aside the one-time discretionary fund of 2.4 million and the unassigned portion after reducing all those numbers amount to 3.2 million dollars and that's about 1.63% of the total expenditures. So total ending balance as of June 30, 2018 is 16,580,879. So one of the big requirements for the interim report is the multi-year projection. Pursuant to ED code 42131, the district is required to demonstrate that it is able to meet its financial obligations for this fiscal year and two additional years. The next page, we have a list, a short summary of the multi-year projection assumptions that we use in computing the numbers. For example, for the LCFF, the revenue total 1718 is 154,000,018 is 159,404,000 and 1920 almost the same amount. We are giving you the information for the base and supplemental and concentration grants as required, as are requested by some of the board members, so they're here. There's also a one-time discretionary fund that we set aside in 1718 for 2.3 million and if you notice, 1819 and 1920 was zero, were zeroed out. The projected enrollment for the current year is at 16,826. This is 76 students less than the old amount. For the 1819, we are producing, uh, we are projecting 16,320 students, which is about 506 less students than 1718. And then for the 1920, it's 15,904, which is about 416 students less than the 1819 fiscal year. Our estimated ADA percentage is at 94.27% and so computing that number, we have estimated attendance for each of the years at 15,861, 15,384 and 14,992. So for the expenditures, two of the major items that are increasing through the years are Calsters and Calpers. As you can see, from 12.58, Calsters is increasing to 14.43% the following year and then 16.28% after that. Same thing with Calpers, 1388, 15531 and 18.1. We included a 1% step and step in column and longevity budget for the salaries. Then for 1819, we have a teacher reduction due to declining enrollment of 19 FTEs, which is about 1.9 million. And then for 1920, a reduction of 16 FTEs, which is about 1.6 million. In 1819, we also have a teacher reduction due to end of contract and that's 1.05 million. So having said that, on page 11 is the combined multi-year projection. I'm just going to mention the total revenues for 1718, 190,329,046 dollars. The following year is 193,847,894 and 1920, 194,192,809. Total expenditures are kind of decreasing from 198.35 million to 194.8 in 1819 and 195 million for 1920. So looking at the excess or deficiency of revenues and the contributions to other funds, by the way, this contribution of the 1 million includes two items, 800,000 for the deferred maintenance and then 200,000 for the child nutrition program. So we're just saying that it's leveled through the years. So the net increase or decrease in fund balance for 1718 is 9 million, 1819 is 1.9 and then 1920 is 2 million. Adding them to the beginning fund balance or reducing them, subtracting them, I mean, the ending balance for the 1718 is 16.5 million, 1819 is 14.6 and 1920 is 12.6 million. So again, it's very important to look at the components of ending balance. I won't read all of this, but the unassigned section, if you will, you know, the second item from the bottom, I want to emphasize that for 1718, it's 3.2 million dollars, but for 1819, it's going to be 1.9 million and then for 1920, it's 54,612 dollars because, you know, we are mostly deficit spending. So the ending balance is 16.5, 14.6 and 12.6 million dollars respectively. We need certification for the first interim report. The positive certification means that the district will be able to meet its financial obligations for the current year and subsequent two fiscal years. Qualified certification means the district may not be able to meet its financial obligations for the current and subsequent two fiscal years. And for negative certification, the district would not be able to meet the obligations for the current and subsequent two fiscal years. So we are showing that we will have a positive certification because based on these numbers, we are going to meet the financial obligations, not only for the current year, but also for the next two fiscal years. With that, I'm open to questions.
Yeah, in regards to the one-time discretionary funds, so that'd be at 2% to 3%? Um, my understanding, I thought Governor Brown wanted us to increase that, one-time discretionary funds, is that correct?
Well, that's what we're going to receive for this fiscal year. In January, we're going to attend the budget workshop, the proposal for the next fiscal year. So hopefully there will be more one-time discretionary fund. This is the last year for Governor Brown, so we're hoping, all school districts are hoping that we would get more money.
So I want to go back to an earlier comment of you saying we're doing mostly, we have deficit spending. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Um, the revenues basically for each year are not enough to sustain the expenditures, the yearly expenditures, and because of that, the fund balance or the savings, if you will, is getting reduced every year. So that's deficit spending in a nutshell.
But as it, as it relates to what we're doing, so are you perceiving us to have a problem or are you perceiving that this can be rectified?
Well, right now it's manageable because as we have shown, you know, we are really reviewing all the expenditures budget and we have, you know, looked at and identified several items that will have augment the fund balance. So for the fourth year.
Is she okay? Maybe I'll take her stuff. Go ahead.
Um, so for the next year, let's say, if the governor or the state is going to grant us more money either from LCFF or other sources, then, you know, the deficit spending will be reduced.
It's also, the board took a resolution too, to have 2% above the 3%.
Mm-hmm.
And so that can be said to be a deficit, but it's really because we're also, by board resolutions, saving. And also, as you move into the outgoing years, you also adjust your budget assumptions? This, we're just telling you a snapshot in time, as you know, October 31st. What did we, what were our assumptions at the beginning of the year? Mid-year, do we need to adjust those based on enrollment, what have you? And then in the outgoing years, what assumptions can we make? Obviously, if we have less students, we're going to need less of other things and so you begin to trim your budget in those outgoing years. But I just want to make sure that when you say deficit spending, you also realize it's because of choices made to have a larger reserve by resolution.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that should be taken into consideration.
I don't think, I, I understand. I don't think that's the total reason. I, I really do think we have to look at, you know, the term we've always used is scrubbing the budget.
Well, you know, most school districts are in the same boat in the sense that, you know, when, we used to have revenue limit funding and then it became LCFF. During the revenue limit funding towards the end of those era, of that era, we, the budget was really bad. You know, it's like a roller coaster ride. It was very low at that point. And then came LCFF, fiscal year 1340. And then, so state started giving more money to the districts. But during those bad times, you know, we have produced a lot of expenditures and, and I'm talking in global terms, not necessarily for Antioch. So, but then, you know, we start looking at a bigger operations. So we need to start hiring, let's say, more people or this and that. So that's, that becomes deficit spending, but we have received the money from prior years and they are sitting in the fund balance.
So let me ask another question. So if I go back to page, let me see what page it says, page five. Because we have 2 million that we haven't used because of all the vacant positions and reductions, how does this bode for our staff? If staff wants, I mean, in other words, are we reserving this money for when we will replace those vacant positions? Let's say we need principals in schools, we need, I'm just curious of how we're doing this because I don't really see this as a reduction.
Well, these were positions that when we did our staffing allocations, the majority of them, as we did our staffing allocations, remember, people are in them at the end of the year and they were put into the budget, but they're positions, not that we didn't fail because we couldn't find people, it's positions that we didn't need based on our enrollment numbers this year.
Got it.
So the, and also when they're budgeting, they're budgeting our employees as to who is in there in the year before. So as you turn over employees and new employees come in, they may be at the same benefits, they may be at a lesser salary, so a lot of that cleanup happens as well by the first interim.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we continue cleaning up so that by second interim, you have, you know, better numbers as well.
Okay. No questions?
I have a question. You, you probably know what it is. When are we going to discuss the ending fund balance and what we're going to do with it? Because even though, as Board Member Vincent says, we're deficit spending, but every year we carry over a large ending fund balance.
Well, if you look at page, let's see, what page is that? Page 11.
Right.
So the projected ending fund balance in 1718 is 16.5 million.
Right.
And then 14.6 and 12.6. Then the components of the ending fund balance on page 12 shows all the designated items, all the set-asides, leaving the unassigned numbers to 3.2 million dollars for the first year, 1.9 the set.
But even so, $3 million, I just, I just hate leaving anything on the table. And then what happens is by the time we get to July, there always seems to be more money. I just want to make sure we're looking at it.
That's why this first interim report, you know, we really made a huge effort to make sure we work.
No, no. And even spending 3 million would be great.
Yeah, yeah, but, but what I'm trying to say though is, you know, I also want us to be careful in the sense that if looking at these current projections and current assumptions, I know these assumptions will change every time, but at this current moment, the third year, the unassigned is 54,612 dollars.
And every, every year we kind of get to that, so.
And then that's why I'm really hoping that, you know, for the budget proposal for next year, Governor Brown will give us, you know, more revenue streams so that this will improve and definitely we can spend it on a lot of items.
And just my war cry is if we have money, rather than save it, you know, spend it.
Yeah.
Does, does, this does not include a pot of money for bargaining?
No.
Exactly.
Okay, that's part of that. Any other questions, comments, observations?
So I just want to say, I do appreciate the ending fund balances, because as noted, we've gotten their reports, but they didn't include for LCFF and those sources what the ending fund balances were. So this is better. But anyway, I'll leave it there.
We've been asked that you accept the first interim.
Yes. So the recommendation is for the board to accept the first interim report and declare that we have a positive certification.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Trustee Sawyer White, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? One?
I just need more time to look at it. So, but thank you. I appreciate it.
That brings us to election of President of the Board of Education.
Do we have speaker cards?
No.
No, no speaker cards.
We don't? Can I go first?
Yes.
I've been thinking a lot about this, and we need somebody that will help to bring consensus to the board. Trustee Hack has been a board member in full for, I think this is your fifth or sixth year. He's been vice president, but not president. And so I would like to make a nomination to elect him president.
I'm sorry, I'm being interrupted with a speaker card for this item.
Well, we already started, so let's second it, and then we can call for that. Or if there's a second or whatever.
I'm sorry, because I was interrupted. Did you make a formal motion?
I made a formal motion.
Thank you.
I'll make a second on that.
Thank you. Now, since we have a speaker problem...
We have a speaker card, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. President, board members, staff, and such an audience. Name is Jeff Bell. I'm Vice Chair of Contra Costa County Board of Education, Chair of the Budget Committee, for the record. But very interesting interim report. In terms of history tonight, history has been very kind to us, and also been very unkind to a lot of us in different ways. But we need to keep in mind that, you know, history is very important in terms of precedence. And I know, having spoken to Mr. Assadory and a lot of other board members, they've been around for a long time, that it's really, really important to be very inclusive, very inclusive in the process. And tonight, just for the record, the Contra Costa County Board of Education voted two African-Americans to lead in terms of president and vice president. So I won't get into that. But that's done. That's for the record. First time, and it probably won't be the last time, but it's for the record. And we, we look forward to, just meaning this, not necessarily board, but general, individuals in general, look forward to rural inclusion. And we like to see, we know there are individuals who are qualified to lead the board. So it will be my pleasure to see individuals who are qualified of color to lead boards. And that was not even a tough discussion with the county tonight, because individuals are well, well-qualified, without a doubt. So I would hope we will see the same thing here tonight. One of the reasons why I'm here, to encourage you, board members and others, to speak in reference to that, because we need individuals of color who've been on the board, who deserve an opportunity to lead, to lead the board itself. And having been there, and I'm there today, and that's what I do, and been Chairman of the Budget, definitely, you know, and responsible for a lot. So what I like to see, I like to see is rural inclusion, not lip service, not a philosophical statement, but rural inclusion by nominating individuals who are qualified, especially those of color in this community, because we know that Antioch really needs it. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Velma Wilson.
Good evening, once again. I know this is going to be a touchy topic, but, you know, I come as a community member, and I come as a parent in this district, a very active parent with two students in this district. So I'm talking on behalf of Velma Wilson. As an African-American mom, I can't sit idle and say that I am pleased with the representation. The color of our skin does not determine our skill set. The color of our skin doesn't determine how well we perform and how well we advocate for the needs of everybody collaboratively, collectively, non-divisive for our students. So Gary, yes, I would love to see the upward movement for you. But I also know that we have to be fair, and we cannot make a decision based on one's skin color. We cannot make a decision based on ethnic background, because that truly the decision that's going to be seek the needs of our students. And that's going to be a good representation of everybody here in this district, whether you white, black, green, yellow, purple, whatever you decide to label yourself. I think we need to make a decision based on what's going to be best for everyone collectively. And I definitely don't think the color of one's skin is going to be paramount.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion?
Yes. I've been on the board for a year, and my child is in the district as well. I'm, I'm not in agreement with the motion. And I, I motion to postpone this matter if it becomes that we're going to vote in this, in this direction. Again, as I'm in agreement with the public comments, majority of our student body are, like I know, an African-American. And two of the board trustees have attended governance training. The other two, other three have not. And this has been addressed in Pittsburgh Unified School District to attend governance training. I requested this initially because I wanted to learn more, to be a more effective board member for all children. So again, it is not about race, it's about qualifications. And you know, how many years' experience have you actually taught in the system, your educational background, your credentials? And I think Deborah Vincent is qualified to be the board president. Thank you.
Further discussion?
On the same topic?
Yes.
Trustee Vincent?
So I, I think that we followed a system in the district of where the person that is vice president that has not served is also given a chance as board president to serve. And so I'd like to see, I'd really like to see this board do something that is equitable, fair. I mean, do a lot of talk about making it, making this environment equitable and fair for our students. And on one hand, I do agree, you know, that we have to support and be inclusive of all students, all staff, all families. And so I support that 200%. I know that there are people in the community that support it 200%. But to, to say that we're not going to practice what we preach, or we're not going to set an example as a board, we can expect other people to, we, you know, it's not about doing what we, you know, don't do what I say, and don't do what I do. It's about really keeping your, keeping your word and matching your word to your actions. And I think this is a time when this district really need that. We have to set an example as a board to say that we're collaborative, we're going to work together. And there's no one on this board that's perfect. That's, that's part, that's what being human is. And I think that all school districts across California, I think people are recognizing that there has to be a shift if we're going to focus on academic improvement for all students, and if we're going to shift the continuum to make sure that this becomes a destination district. So I, I think it's important that we practice what we say and we say what we mean, not just do it in lip service when it's convenient. And so I look forward to this board getting an equitable decision. And following the process that we've all, always followed, and not really get stuck on personalities and, and all of this other stuff. I think that's not even important. What we need is to be able to move this district forward positively and in a manner that's going to work for all staff.
Are you allowed the other comment card?
I was going to ask, anybody objects to having one last speaker after the last card, unless there's someone in the room, turn it in immediately?
I'm fine with this.
Are you open to that?
Yes.
Okay. Odessa?
Good evening, board members. I have been in Antioch for over twenty years, and I've actually watched board go through a lot of changes and stuff. And when I, one thing I have noticed, and I've always been a supporter of the Antioch Unified School District, is that we set example of doing the right thing all the time, doing the right thing when it's difficult sometime. And I'm trying to figure out, when trustee Gray made the motion that we nominate, that Mr. Hack is nominated for board president, why would we change the direction of things we've always done in the past? History has shown that normally the vice president is nominated to hold the role as president. So I want trustee Gray to explain to me and to the residents of Antioch, and to everybody else coming forward, why we deter from that. I think we need to stop doing things because it's personal, or it makes us look bad, or we're getting prepared for campaign. Let's do the right thing when sometime it seems like it is not the most populous thing. Thank you.
And I was going to do that, and I'd be happy to do that. In the history of Antioch, at least as long as I've been on the board through a term, and for as far back as I remember when I lived here, we've never had a censured vice president, a vice president who didn't participate in a process to find out whether we're employee complaints. She's on censure by the majority of the board through the end of the school year. That is my reason for not going with Vice President Vincent. It's, you can't do one thing and say, oh, and by the way, it's okay, and now we're going to make you president, perhaps next year. But there, there has to be a lesson learned here.
That, this probation is, I asked an attorney, and this is going to end up being a lawsuit, because that she is not a district employee, the probation is nonvalid. I researched this, and it's going, this shouldn't have to come to a lawsuit. So I'm not understanding, she's vice president, her term is getting ready to end, and there won't be another opportunity for her to be president. So I would like to, again, motion to postpone this matter, and we can...
We have a motion on the table.
Okay.
First, we'll vote on that motion, and then if...
And for clarification, it's censure, it's not probation.
Well, it's not valid. She is not a district employee. I can look up the ed codes and present it to you, but I would like to put this on hold, because this is unjustifiable. I am totally shocked. I really am shocked. The way this board operates, and I've been here for a year. First, no board development for, until April, since I was elected in November. And then the requirements to be an effective leader is to take governance training, to take governance training. And you're asking someone to be president who has not done that, who has not done that. And I have not been absent. I have been here every board meeting. I put my vacation around this schedule. I've taken this seriously. I've been verbally attacked and threatened to be recalled, and no one's backed me up, no one. So I, again, this is not, this can be put on hold, because based on the board bylaws, I can present this at the next board meeting, she is not, cannot be censured. She cannot be censured. She's not a district employee. And is this, the way this is operating, vice president, the next step is president. And so are you saying, Diane, that on your eight, nine years on the board, the vice president is not...
There's been times, yes.
Okay. And so what is your reason assigned for the censorship, that she's not qualified for this position?
I feel that trustee Hack would be a better president. I, the censure is a big one for me. And I have, you've called me a racist, and you've also, you're not nice to staff or fellow board members at times. I just think we needed a year to heal. And with president, if Gary Hack takes the presidency, that will be the opportunity.
We have a motion on the table.
So actually, I need to respond. I'm sorry, I can't leave those comments out, out like that. So in reference to trustee Gibson Gray's comment, you've had numerous opportunities to have coffee with me, and I'm going to be quite frank with you. I have received numerous comments and postings from community members that have felt that you present yourself as racist based on your comments and based on your actions. And so I have not had coffee with you to present some of that info to you. I hardly think that, you know, it's unfortunate that you feel that I've called you racist. The other thing I'm going to say to you is, you made comments to me when Barbara Cowan was on the board, that when it was my time to be president, that you would support that. So it's pretty clear that you're not ready to keep your word based on false information of a censure. And so it's disappointing to me that you cannot keep your word, and that this is not a game. This is about our children's lives. This is about what's at stake for the staff. And this is about practicing what we say we're going to do to make this district a really positive and open district. Yes, I've gone to trainings, I've gone to board trainings, and my recommendation stands that this board need to go through training for sexual harassment, bullying, and intimidating behavior, so we can govern and function as a collaborative board. When you have an understanding of what competence is and what it means to engage in those behaviors, then I, I think it would be better in terms of how we operate and govern the board. So it's unfortunate that you've made it personal, but it wouldn't be the first time that you've made something personal with the board member. And I'm happy to go to coffee with you and to talk about that. And, you know, if you're open to doing that, I think that's what the one-on-ones, and that's what the collaboration is about. So I, I think that if you all are poised to, to do what you're going to do based on your reasons, you have your personal reasons, I have my personal reasons, and this can go on forever. I don't think it's appropriate, even, even during times when different language was used. I mean, we've spent, you know, I, I understand you haven't done this as a district too, but also, you've not had a board trustee of ethnic background as engaged in this community as I am. And so I think we have to be careful with the actions that we take, and we have to be careful with the decisions that we're making as a board. I would, I would hate to think that coming down the pike is something of a lawsuit based on implicit bias and all these other issues. We really have to show that this board can be equitable and fair, and that we can be collaborative. And once again, the offer stands. I've tried to have coffee with, you know, I've only had coffee with one board member. The, you know, the other two, I understand schedules and busyness, but you guys have had numerous opportunities to go one-on-one with me. So I, I really think that I am next in line to be board president, and I really would like to see this board follow through on that action.
And I apologize, I must have missed the invitation for coffee. Haven't received it. Regardless, I just feel that the behavior that lent to the censure is a reason why I am nominating Gary Hack in a point of order. Unless there's further conversation, there's a motion on the table.
Yes, there is a motion.
There is a motion. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
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 No.
Opposed?
No.
Three ayes, two opposed. No extensions. Motion carries. Election of Vice President of the Board of Education.
I would like to speak on that one first, too.
Sure.
Crystal Sawyer White has indicated an interest to educate herself. She has been participating. I feel that if she's nominated as vice president, it will give you more opportunities to understand the processes. So I therefore nominate you for vice president.
So, I therefore nominate you for vice president.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think Diane made some good points.
I would concur.
So, I would just like to say that I think trustee Sawyer White brings a fresh perspective, and I know it has been a challenge and difficult to be on this board because of the lack of respect that you have received and the lack of collaboration and also a lack of understanding, a lack of general understanding. And so, I would hope that as difficult and challenging as it has been, that if you could put the students first, that would be most appreciated for me, and I'm really hoping you'll accept the nomination for vice president.
I appreciate the nomination. Before I accept, I would like to just make a statement that I am about the kids for Antioch. I wish that this board could be more cohesive. I learned a lot at the second conference that I attended, and I will share that later. But hopefully, things need to change, really need to change. In Southern California, people are aware of what's going on in this board, and I was really shocked that they feel that we're not supporting one another. So, as a vice president, I would accept, and I will be the best leader that I can be.
Do I hear a motion?
We have a motion.
We had a motion and a second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations to both of you.
Congratulations to both Mr. Hack and trustee Sawyer White.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Although I'm disappointed that this board failed to make an equitable decision, I will congratulate trustee Hack and trustee Sawyer White.
I will say, I'm sure it won't be satisfactory because I can understand the disappointment, but I know I served my first four years without getting in office, and Mr. Hack, same could be said of his, of him. So, I'd hope, as trustee Gibson Gray said, that next year, you would be named president for what that's worth.
Yes, I will be out of office in 2018, so there's no hope of that. And perhaps, that probably was a part of the design, but I'm not really worried because vengeance and justice will be served. Vengeance belongs to God, so I don't really have to be here and take it personal. I know it is personal, but that's not what it was meant to be. And so, I would hope that this board is capable of putting children's needs first and that, you know, that they take this job serious. And it's just disappointing, once again, that, you know, trustee Gibson Gray cannot keep her word. So, I'm not really worried about all of these other actions, and I know that in time, the truth will be revealed, and I know that the truth is coming.
That brings us to the election of board representative to CFD 89-1 for one-year term. What's the history of that, current history?
Diane gives...
Diane.
Is currently serving.
Who's the second?
Carrie.
If anybody else wants it, I just live, I have a home. I don't live there, but I have a home in that district, which is why I said I would take it last time. If anybody else wants it, anybody else live in that district? You have Melo Rus?
I'm taking on some of that.
Yeah, I think, I think if you want to keep it, that's fine with me. So, if she wants to keep it, that's fine.
Okay.
Need a motion?
We need a motion for that?
So, I make a motion that for CFD 89, that the position remains the same.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, you can continue. In that service, thank you for that. Election of board member, item E, election of board member liaison to Contra Costa County School Boards.
So, I'd like to nominate trustee Crystal Sawyer White for that role.
You want that?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations on that assignment. Certificate of signatures.
This is a standard when you reorganize the board. We are asking, which I just think on the street.
Yeah, the school districts are required to have filed with the county office. And since we have this reelection or reorganization, then we just have to identify the new positions of this. Basically, a basic procedure for state.
And I will need all signatures this evening.
Do I hear a motion to?
Move.
Except moved, trustee Gibson Gray, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Hack. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Certificate of signatures moves ahead. Items for discussion by board, tablets and laptops for board members. Did we have some research done on that?
Yes.
Yeah, it was in your Friday board, and Ms. Crystal Sawyer White said baseline is the information we provide, so you'd like to discuss it with the board.
Okay.
Right. Again, I think this is the fourth time. I am requesting either laptop or a tablet. It would have been really beneficial to have that during the conference. I had to actually, you know, take my own notes by hand. And I just think that we should move forward. And if there's estimate cost, Joe, I mean, I think as low as $300 per iPad or tablet, can we move forward, please?
We would just provide the laptops that are in front of you, so there would be no additional cost.
I apologize. I think I deleted that now that I asked you to email it to me. I don't have that information. Could you tell us how much they cost and all that? Do you have it with you? Does somebody have it?
We didn't cost it out.
We didn't cost it out.
Oh, what was in the, I'm sorry, I've been sick.
We shared with you of surrounding districts, how many provide laptops. We'll use that board meeting, how many provide laptops for board members to take home, and do you remember that offhand?
I do, because I did the research. Yes, I queried our county office of ed and our six neighboring districts from Pittsburgh out to Knightson. I got a response from everyone but Knightson, and two of the districts provide laptop tablets. And the third district, I think it was the county office, if a board member asks for it, and they said every once in a while, I think they have two now that do, but in that providing, it is theirs to bring back and forth to board meetings. So, as Joe described, it would be the one that you have here, but you'd be responsible for bringing it back to the board meetings.
And I don't know how much research you did, do they, are the employees...
I'm sorry, the request was that every district provides them, and so, we wanted to, we came back with that information only.
Maybe my question is for him. So, if we provide a laptop, just like employees, the, I'm sure the same rules would apply, the electronic agreement, the same programs, the same restrictions.
We would have to not allow you to be administrators in the laptop because we wouldn't be able to allow you to install personal software. That would be a gift of public funds because you would be given the laptop. We would provide mail, full versions of Office and email for you. You would have access to wireless on the district if you were at a district site. You would be required to sign a document stating that you are checking out the laptop, and you would be held liable for loss of that laptop, just like any other employee. And you would be required, most of you have already signed a document for the acceptable use of technology, as required to have an account with us. So, we would provide you the laptops that are before you. You would need to bring them to the board meeting. We do not have any spares for you to function on those laptops. But we didn't cost it out because it has been costed out already. So...
So, we just take this one home?
Correct.
Oh, that's a no-brainer for me.
Yeah, I would have maybe one or two spares to just accommodate the occasional, you know, I left it in, you know, my office or something like that. But yeah, we would be just looking for direction from the board, given to superintendent Nello on what we would need to do next for you, and then we would formulate some policies. Our direction was to provide research to you so you can make that decision.
One more question. These don't go anywhere other than here.
They stay here all the time.
To me, it's a no-brainer.
What do you mean formulate policies?
Well, we would have to designate a form. We don't generally, this would be a first, we don't check out laptops to board members. So, we'd have to formulate a document and run it through our legal counsel to make sure it's effectively covering certain situations. Our staff actually doesn't check out laptops for the summer. They actually have to sign a form to take that home for the summer. So, we would just essentially copy the same agreement, make sure it's applicable to you as a board member, and that would be what you'd be required to sign, just to acknowledge that you've taken district property home with you.
So, what did other school districts do in reference? Do they do the same thing, just create the form to sign out the laptops?
Some of the feedback I received was a document, most school districts, they would allow for a board member to request one. It wasn't given to you as a board member, but was open to you as a request. Most of them consisted of signing that document, acceptable use of technology form, which is standard for all of us.
Okay, and if the board member wanted to take the laptop to training, so once they signed the form, they would actually be able to leave the premises with the laptop?
Yeah, you would be able to use it for any...
I think that's really what you wanted, was to be able to have something at trainings, correct?
Correct.
And then, we have to stress for, and I just want to make sure it's on the record that you would have to do it for business purposes only, and you can't install any applications that would be non-business related because it would be a gift of public funds. We have to be on a fine line of what we give you, but you would be provided a full copy of Office, and you would be able to join any wireless network that you wish. So...
Sounds like a win-win.
I didn't know we were talking about these. We could have resolved this a couple of months ago.
I didn't know that. I thought the personnel, I'm sorry, Personnel Commission had access as well. That's not true.
The laptops are used for any meeting that would be in here. So, the Personnel Commission does meet here and therefore would have access to those laptops. I will have to find other means to provide them that, but we can do that.
We don't want a laptop. Anybody else not want one? We just need three.
We would make it optional.
That's two. Jerry, I can't think of him having one. So, there's three.
I'm still waiting for him to sign my form.
Yeah.
So, it sounds like what I'm hearing is pretty much consensus by the board that if a board member would like to follow that process, we'll get...
We'll be happy to accommodate.
We're happy to set that up for you. It just might not have been, is that what I'm hearing?
And just make sure the three stay here.
Does this have to become, will this become a voting matter at all, or is it just, can you go right through?
I think it's to be consensus.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
We can start tomorrow, talk, do my talking.
Yeah, we'll just formulate a policy, we'll shoot to get it to you as soon as possible.
Okay, appreciate that.
But won't we have to have a board policy for laptops?
No, it's just, it's just more of like a, yeah, just the form and making sure that the document you're signing is effectively worded to meet your relationship to the district.
Okay.
Okay, wonderful.
All those months, sorry, Crystal.
No problem.
Who knew?
And then, we have second item, nutrition program.
Crystal.
Oh, yeah. Again, I wanted to compare, in maybe the next school year, if we can consider a nutrition program that's healthy. Like I presented, I guess, to Board meetings back Revolutionary Foods dot com, they have nutritional menus. And my son, I mean, I see the menus, and I just think that we could offer a little bit more healthy meals. But I didn't, obviously, we have a cost or a report, how much we're spending, I didn't see that.
What we could do is, if the consensus is on board, what we could do is find out with the board, make a report on our current nutrition program, what the guidelines are, where, I heard this evening that we're going to have to, above and beyond what we receive for the program, pay an additional $200,000. So, I think it might be timely that we hear kind of what our current nutrition program state of that is, and then make decisions if the board wants to provide direction after that, if that's kind of amenable.
Because San Francisco Unified School District, they're saving money in their contract with Revolutionary Foods.
So, by not a pen, would you like a district report at a board meeting?
I'm interested.
Yes, sure.
For sure.
If you'd ask what they've researched in the past on nutritional programs.
Then a current report on our nutritional program now and the cost.
Yes.
Thanks.
We have three on January 30th, maybe February, by next year's calendar.
Item 14, resolutions for first reading, none. 15, resolutions for immediate action. Resolution 2017, 1814, authorizing provisional internship program permit.
In front of the board this evening is a resolution to, for two teachers. One would be as an educational specialist in our special education program, and the second one is a social science slash opportunity. And these are positions that have become open here in the district, and the individuals are getting into programs, but this would allow them to work while they're going through a program here in California. So, I'd ask the board to approve this resolution.
Just curiosity, would they be paid full salary?
Yeah, they go on a salary schedule. If you remember our salary schedule, the first two columns are prior to a preliminary credential, so they would be on that part of the salary schedule.
Brings us to item 16.
We have to approve it?
I'm sorry, is there a vote on that? Let me see.
A motion on it.
Okay, there's a motion on that?
I guess.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 16, resolutions for second reading, none. 17, board policies for first reading, board policy 9240, board development.
Yeah, so what's included in the agenda is the language that Ms. Sawyer White offered at the last board meeting, and that we're directed to put in there. I also included, trustee Sawyer White also gave further revisions that she would like the board to consider, which I included in your Friday board, given that some board members said they wanted to see it beforehand. But what's before you this evening is the exact verbiage that you wanted to look at based on trustee Sawyer White's input at the last board meeting. And it's first reading for input. The part that's changed symbol, I call it.
I don't think it's necessary. That's my opinion.
What's not necessary?
The expectations that each individual governing board member will participate in professional development and commit the time and energy to be an informed and effective leader. We're elected by the public, we do our job, we do it to the best of our ability, and if we don't do it, we get unelected. I don't think mandating it in this form is necessary or required.
I'll piggyback on the second, the same sentence, the first part I crossed out, just stopped at the word "that," last in bold, California School Board Association, professional, include expectations that. I'm okay starting with "each," but whether it's necessary or not is debatable.
What?
Capital E.
In that last, bold on the first paragraph, okay, there's four lines there, right? Go down to the second line and the word "each." I would eliminate the words "prior to each" and make "each" a capital E. But that, again, I'm not going to tie the sword on it.
And the background on this is, when I was board president, I had another board member say, "This board member's not doing this. This board member is not going to..." Enough school things. This person missed three graduations. That is not our role to encourage or support other, we can support them, but as far as to dictate to them what their job is or what they need to do, in my opinion, is not necessary, but if everybody else agrees, I'll go with it, but I don't think it's needed. It's just, I think if this had been in the language, we would have had more... It's just, I think if this had been in the language, we would have had more of a board problem with somebody bringing it up and saying, this person isn't doing this. And I just don't want to get in the business of telling board members how to do their job. They're, they're elected, they know what they need to do, and it's up to them.
So I'm going to say trustee Gibson Gray, I find your comments to be very conflicting and contradictory. So I am also going to say that the language that is included up there is consistent with the language that is in an ideal sample board policy from the California School Boards Association, which the state, which the state Board of Education relies on heavily. So I, I don't mind that we're going to wordsmith, but I, I think that if this board is to be competent, if this board is to move into the 21st century, I think it's going to be incumbent upon every board member to have training. And we can say that we can't tell another board member what to do, but when you're putting censures in place, that is exactly what you are doing. So I, I think that it's important that we understand what we say, say what we mean and mean what we say. So I think trustees Hack comments about changing the language for the "each," I don't have a problem with that. But I think this is just consistent language with the original California School Boards Association sample policy. So.
And I appreciate that. However, the reason for the censure does not have anything to do with training or whatever. We are entitled to our own opinion and I appreciate yours.
Okay. There is a reason why, again, I don't want to react to this. Governance training is, is, is not required. But again, once you attend the conferences on an annual basis, I've spoken to at least 10 trustees, Southern California, Northern California. And it's been very informative. I won't go into too much, but the Legal Symposium I just attended, they recommend that. So you, so you could be more informed. So maybe if we add in necessary to be informed and an effective leader, that's, that's what they're trying to say.
My comment was, if everybody else wants to do it, I'm fine with it. But I personally feel it's unnecessary. That was it.
Okay, but again, that's why we're not working together as a board. And hopefully that everyone will take at least one course in 2018 and we can be on the same page. So once Diane, you take a governance training course, I think.
Then we'll all be on the same page.
Right.
Okay, we don't always have to agree and that's the beauty of a board.
Well, we need to be more cohesive.
Okay, thank you.
I really, I really think so. And this, I didn't put specifics, but then they have the workshops, the Legal Symposium is in here. So to be more informed, I would like to put in there, and an effective leader. I don't think necessarily it's energy necessary, if that's what you're stating, board trustee Diane Gibson Gray. But it's, I just believe that it is important, it's relevant. My experience, the first two classes that I attended in April, they informed me of things that I wasn't aware of. And again, if we're not meeting for coffee, if we're not sitting down one-on-one, we all can't have a meeting together, how else can we learn about governance training? So I, I move to, if you wanted to add, to be more informed and effective leader. It's not a requirement.
And I know you've only been on the board for one year, but I've been to many, many governance trainings. Just, I don't want you to think I'm not going to any training at all. Sorry, it's hard for me to talk. So again, we can agree to disagree. And if the rest of the board wants it, I'm fine with it. That's what I said.
All right, but another issue is, is that this is in the gamut, which is not part of Antioch Unified School District's board trustee. And so if you log in and compare the two, that's where we have a discrepancy.
Well, and.
Supposedly that has not been done in the past and no one has been logging into the gamut. Is that, is that true?
And just to be clear, I abide by the Antioch Unified School District Board and Policy. Theirs are, theirs are recommendations, ours are approved. Regardless, this conversation's gone on too long. If you want to add the sentence, like I said, I don't think it's necessary. But if you do and everybody wants it, I'm fine with it.
What is the sentence?
Let's keep it, it's in bold right there.
Second part is fine with me.
I can, I can go with it.
Yes.
And it's always coming back for second reading?
Yeah, I like it the way it is. I mean, it's, I've, I've looked at the original policy, so it looks fine.
Crystal.
Okay, where are we now? Number 18, board policies for second reading and action, none. 19, information anticipation for future action, Williams' visit report. Oh, that's information I had for general information.
Yeah, we are required to annually update you. As you can see, the follow-up with the schools were found compliant, all visited by the county with a D. That's your report.
Are there's, are, are there any schools that were not compliant?
No.
Yeah, so I, I did review the report and I guess I had a question is, how often is this report used to inform? There were some minor issues in some of the schools. And how often is this report used to inform that those corrections are made? And is there a timeline for those corrections?
Good question, yes. We have to do what's called a fit report annually. And we have to provide updates for those and they come out once a year. In the meantime, of course, any person can file a Williams complaint, it's posted in every school office or probably posted in every classroom. And those we report to you too on a quarterly basis.
Okay, thanks. Do we have to, it's just general information. Okay, got it.
Future agenda items from board members?
I have a couple of items I'd like to have the board revisit. One is the Voter Rights Act is really coming around to most of the school districts. Martinez is the latest. I know it's been in San Jose and all over. And really, the goal is to have elections happen per district. So there's adequate representation from every neighborhood and to ensure that there isn't a block of people represented from any one zone. So I would encourage this board and superintendent to get in front of a possible letter that's coming to this district in terms of redistricting so that the voting process can be fair and inclusive. And I think that we should start looking at what the map would look like, what the costs would be. And I know that for some of the cities that have received the letter, they've spent upwards of millions of dollars and have lost their cases. Because it's, it's a, it's a no-win situation with the redistricting. And I just want us to be ready to kind of start looking at that.
I think it's a very important issue and one that I agree with. So I was going to suggest as my end for discussion at our next board meeting.
Thank you. Yeah, so we don't have to spend any money out of our budget. And the other thing I wanted to, is we have some employees come and talk about an issue at the last board meeting. I'll email you, but I just want to make sure we stay on top of some of the concerns. I think her name was Sarah. She gave a report of some issues that wasn't working at one of the sites. And, yeah, I can, I actually had a piece of paper that I've misplaced. I had some details on that. So I think that we should take a look at that and make sure that we're following up on any issues that the staff bring in. That was one. I'll try to find it and email you about that. And there was a lighting issue front and back. I think it was Lone Tree Elementary, lighting issues, et cetera, et cetera. And I want to make sure, okay, great. And then the other thing is that Antioch High School has, in front of its crosswalks, a parent walked me over at both ends. It looked like one pole that goes into the entry of the parking lot where the football field is. I guess there was an accident. And they hit one of the little white poles that has the flicking light for people to cross, for students to cross the street. So I did make a phone call to, I did send an email to City of Antioch and they have someone on it. But the, the goal is if they cannot repair them, they will replace them with the newer version of the safety lights. But the light near BD Auditorium is absolutely not working for, it doesn't work for students to cross the street. And there has to be a staff out there. So I just want to put that on future agenda item for us to check, the safety crosswalks of all the schools. And I understand the City of Antioch will initiate the fixes to be done through the county. So if we have crosswalks that are not working for safety purposes, we need to make sure the City of Antioch is aware they have a designated staff for that. But that light has been out for some time and parents are concerned with their special needs students trying to cross the street without adult supervision. Safety item, thank you.
Number 22, additional comments from the public. We don't have any cards from the public or the staff. Item 23, reports from board members. Anyone wishing to speak on that subject?
So yeah, go ahead, Gary. So I actually went to the racial coalition justice meeting and they were meeting in Antioch. And they're looking to bring some services and programs to Antioch in the surrounding area, working with the Contra Costa County District Attorney. They're in every city, trying to focus on reducing the school-to-prison pipeline and a number of different community issues. And so I think we have a member, do we have a staff that sits on that team, the Racial Justice Coalition? We have somebody that sits in on that group. So I think it's important that we stay informed with some of the services that are going to be coming down from the county for some of our students on probation, et cetera, et cetera. And the other issue is, oh, I'll have to come back to what the other issue is. I'll come back.
Trustee Hack? You know, I, I'm blessed that I'm one of these people who have not been blessed with any kind of musical ability. But I appreciate music. And this is a good time of the year. Last week I went to a couple of different sites to listen to concerts or whatever. And this week I'm going to three. Tomorrow night will be at your place. And then next week I'm going to go to three more. So I'm going to get my fill with music. But what's kind of cool though, is I, next week will be elementary school that I'll be going to. And then I've been going to some middle schools and now I'm going to go to high schools. And you can see the progression. There are some very talented kids out there. And I don't know how music teachers put up with that, with young kids. But, you know, they do, which is kind of cool though. And it's a good time of year to enjoy music in Antioch school district. Jesse Sawyer White?
Mr. President. I just wanted to say that the conference, California School Board Association, again, I learned quite a bit. One was the Legal Symposium. They also suggested if, in the near future, if you do not want legal counsel, to have an in-house counsel. And that would help our board as a whole. So I was not aware that you could hire an in-house counsel that actually could work on the site. And it is feasible. It's not, you know, outlandish. And then number two is safety. There was a presentation on human trafficking. The city is addressing that. And I think we should have a training. Vallejo has done it for the board trustees and for the staff as a whole. I wasn't aware that it could be any student from any background, designer purses and what have you. They target certain girls who are into materialism in high school and it's quite frightening. So my suggestion is the future agenda is training for human trafficking.
I wasn't able to make this year's conference, but I have made, just for the record, I've made 10 of, 10 of the 12 years that I've sat on the board. And I attended three conferences from my, my day job in Pittsburgh. So tried to stay active in that regard. Concerts, oh boy, these music teachers, how they do it is incredible. It's, they're bursting at the seams. Park Middle School, they had 51 violins, is that how they, where it is? 51 in, in one room. Really something, a lot of fun. Okay, future meeting information, January 24th and February 21st. Meetings to be held here. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Ah, so moved. Okay. You have a motion and do, you're going to do the motion and a second? And we have a second? Congratulations on our new officers and.
Yes, congratulations.
New assignments. Have a blessed holiday season. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.